And then I'll start the countdown.
Okay, well, good. We have recording. That's good. Hi.
Okay, I see Tracy's hand up, so we're gonna go ahead and get started in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, Camby. We are going to call the work session for October 4th to order. Mayor Hodgson is traveling, so I will be presiding this evening. We pray for safe travels for him. We are going to be discussing the general fund revenue and expenditure forecasting. So with that, I will turn it over to Eileen.
Great, thank you, counsel. I'm very pleased to present this financial modeling project to you tonight. It started, as I've mentioned before, we had done, Eric was doing some work on the capital improvement plan. And that work kind of automatically led him to do the financial model for various funds. But tonight, we wanted to present the general fund because that's the most significant fund. What I want out of tonight is just your familiarity with the with the model. We don't need to make any decisions tonight on it. You'll see it again and again and again and again, is my hope. And that you begin to become familiar with it so that you can use it in goal-setting, decision-making, strategic investments, or decision-making that you have. And that you can see how it ultimately, and we're not going to show you this tonight either. We'll show you the effect of it, but ultimately, we will bring it live. And in a goal-setting environment, for example, you could say, you know, how much if we increase this revenue source by? And you'll see how it would bend the lines, and you'll understand what bend the lines means as you go through the presentation. But, you know, you could play with any scenario assumption that you want, and this model will produce it for you. So I think it's very, it's a very good product. And it will help you down the line in making decisions. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Eric and let you make, let him make this presentation. And, you know, I'm gonna speak for him, but is it okay if they ask questions along the way? Great, thank you.
Right, councilors, nice to see you. So just to expand on what Eileen said a little bit, when I was doing, let's see, probably on the next slide. When I was finishing the FY 2021 audit, and then started working on the 23 budget, one of the things I had to do was to transfer SDC funds from the SDC fund to the capital projects that had been done. When I tried to do that, I realized there wasn't really a comprehensive process in place that was tracking capital projects on the long term. The, you know, our budget is focused on a one-year thing, but a lot of these capital projects go longer than one year. So there were numbers written in in future years, but there wasn't, like, the funding streams weren't defined saying like, well, we're gonna take this much from park improvement, SDC, and apply it to these projects, right? So I saw that there was a need there for doing the long-term planning. So in December of '22, I had this idea that we needed to have an SDC administration team, which I had brought to Scott. Scott liked it. We wanted to do it. It just never took off. But then, again, in July of this year, it was still nagging at me that I needed to work on this capital project thing. I wanted to come up with a whole process that was team-based. So that if one person leaves the city, that one person's not holding all the information about capital planning that goes over a long-term thing. So my solution to that is to have a team of people that are always looking at it. So one person leaves, the team can fill in the rest of the teammates about what's happening, right? So, and we could bring that information to council and budget, and it's just more transparent. So I just started working on it myself. And the first thing I have to do is forecast revenue and expenditure in various funds to know how much money's gonna be available to spend on capital projects. I built a five-year forecasting worksheet. I know that we've got to allocate the funding streams for every project, because every project can use different funding streams. And then I had to kind of just write an outline for what I thought this whole team-based approach was gonna be, which I'm calling the capital project planning team. And then part of that was doing the revenue and expenditures for every fund. And when we get like halfway through this presentation is when I saw problems in the general fund. I let that sit on my desk for a couple days and then reevaluated how I had done all this forecasting, and then got ahold of Eileen right away and told her what was happening. So what I'm presenting to you tonight, the first half of this, is my idea of how the capital project planning team is gonna work. Then the second half will be what I found in the general fund that we need to talk about. So for forecasting capital project, the goals were, one, that we have good estimates and forecast resources and requirement for future years. We need to know how much is going out, how much is coming in. I think it's a good idea that we identify and prioritize projects. We had a long list of capital projects. As a team, we would sit down and look at those capital projects with the goals of the council, assign priorities to the projects. It's really important that we get accurate project estimates on these projects. That is one hole that I don't really know how the estimates are done. But I do know that the actual cost versus what our estimates sometimes vary widely. So the estimates need to get tightened up. And then the big thing for me was the allocating the funding streams. We have, I think, 11 different SDC funding streamlines, plus we have grants, ARPA money being one of them, and the fund balance, and park maintenance fees, street maintenance fees. There's all this money that we have available, and we need to take every one of those streams and allocate it to the project in percentage, priority, whatever. And then fourth bullet point is project tracking and project management. I'm sure that there's project management happening, but as a team, we're not getting a download on what's happening with the project so that, like, finance would be aware of the financial implications. Or if someone else has another project that they're keyed in on getting, if one project is gonna be a detrimental impact to that, we just need to be team-based and have that all happening. The other thing that I think this is good for is both the swim and transit departments have got approved in their budgets to do these bigger capital projects. Like Transit wants $3 million to do a transit building, right? They had a million and a half approved in the 23 budget, so that million and a half is sitting there. And they got another million and a half approved this year. So they have their $3 million. But that, that data that Transit has the $3 million for the building is not really written down clearly anywhere. So having a capital project funding team like this would allow different funds to save money over years, and everyone would be aware that's what they're doing. So when we see big fund balances in transit for next year, we'll know that part of the $4 million or whatever they'll have, $3 million of that is set aside to do these buildings, you know, to do their project. So those are my goals for the capital project team.
And thus, we're not spending the same SDC dollars twice.
Quick question. What's the acronym SDC?
System Development Charges.
Okay.
So this is the method I use for the forecasting. I took five years of actual data. And I have those by account line. I do that so I can see trends, like when we get the ARPA money, right? That's gonna come in and be a huge number in one year, the second year, and then disappear, right? So it's good to see those trends. I use the current year budget, the one that just got adopted. And then I'm forecasting as simply as possible, as I can, for five years in the future. I'm doing the expenditure categories just by personnel and material and services as just single-line amounts. I'm not doing every single account, projecting those forward. It's just a personnel line, right? And then the capital outlay, I'm actually writing in every project so we can see what capital projects are coming up for the city. So this is an example of what the forecasting looks like for revenue, and I chose the SDC fund. You can see in the, in the top part of this, there's those 11 revenue streams in the SDCs. On the, of the data, on the left-hand side is five years of data. And then on the right-hand side, we have the 24 budget. And then there is actually five years of projected data going forward. But just because the spreadsheet's so massive, I only have the three years showing, just because I wanted to show you a sample of what the sheet looks like. The transfers out and other uses down in the bottom, those are the planned SDC transfers for the current capital projects that are on the books right now. None of the other funds have revenue kind of listed with that level of detail. But because those SDC fees all get used separately, I wanted more detail there. And I'm doing just, like, if we look at the SDC fee, at the first one, street improvement SDCs, you can watch the dollar amount across the top. And in this version, I'm just saying, okay, we're gonna get like $650,000 a year, year-over-year. Like I said, I'm trying to make this super basic, so we have a starting point for just looking at forecasting. I was talking to Eileen before this, like, as the team develops this more, we might have more detail about these funding streams where we can adjust it so it's not so basic. But we needed, I needed a basic model to move forward. So that's the revenue. This is forecasting of expenditures, and this is what I was talking about. We're looking at the street fund right here. And personnel's not showing, just materials and services. So on the left-hand side, there's actual numbers for the last five years for each one of those line items. But then when I'm projecting it forward, I'm just using the category total, the total MNS number. And I'm just applying a straight percentage to it. I don't know what it is in this case, probably 6% increase year-over-year, right? And then we see the capital outlay at the bottom, and those are project specifics down there. For the 24 budget, I have the actual dollar amounts written in there, because those are approved dollar amounts from the budget. And then I'm just doing a category total, the capital outlay total at the bottom with the, that's actually based off the five-year SCIP that was part of the budget. And then I use that data to make this summary table. And the summary table is basically taking beginning balance, the revenue, how much are your resources? And then listing all of the category expenditures just by the category line. This is to allow us to look at what's happening with the fund balance. So in the street fund in this example, in '26, we have a negative fund balance of $787,000, right? That's what I wanted this forecasting to be for. So we can look at the summary page, and then we're like, oh, we need to move some of the capital projects around, right? Okay, before I go on to the capital projects part, does anyone have any questions? Jason.
You're, thank you. You were showing here on the spreadsheet in 2027, there's $787,000 shortfall in the estimate. Is that because we have $787,000 more in projects planned for that year than we are projecting revenue? Or is it because there's some other thing, trigger that hasn't fallen, that revenue is gonna come into there at some point in time?
This one is based off of, I think, the capital outlay section. So if you see the budget in '24, there's $8 million right there being spent in capital in '24. Then in '25, it's another 8.6 million. Then the next year, it's $4 million, right? That's a huge expenditure. So this is why I wanted to use the capital project planning, where we could look at some of those capital projects and just shift them a couple of years down the line, right?
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna dive into the capital project stuff. And just so you know, when we're, when I did this in the leadership team, I'm, I'm actually have my laptop with Excel posted up on the screen. So we can, we can work on this stuff and make adjustments on the fly while it's happening. So, you know, we can make the changes right there. So this is how the capital planning sheets I have set up. At the top is revenue in blue, expenditures in red. And then the capital projects are all listed out by projects, and the dollar amounts for each one of those projects. And so this is where we can see that in FY '26, the street fund would have a negative fund balance, right? So I'm thinking we would use the sheet in the team meetings to be like, well, let's move some of those capital projects over to '26, and we can just start shuffling capital projects so that we don't end up with a negative fund balance. We can see how spending the money on the, on the capital projects is related to the amount of revenue coming in and the regular expenditures in the department. So it's more of a comprehensive picture for the directors and for the team. Let's see, so the forecasting data, the SDC funds are really crucial. Because one of the things that clued me in is when people would ask, how are we funding that project? The answer would be, well, it's this SDC funding stream. And I realized that that funding stream was being used in three or four projects, right? So overused. But because of the way I built the other data, we're gonna be able to see, to make sure that those SDC funding streams aren't getting appropriated to the, you know, the same dollars aren't getting spent on three different projects, right? So another part of the forecasting that's important is the revenue and expenditure, as I said. The summary data allows us to look at those category totals and the effect on the fund balance, make sure that funds aren't gonna be in a negative fund balance in a few years. And then with the capital planning details, it just allows the team to work together to set priorities and move projects around to make sure that there's funding for it all. And, you know, just that we have a good plan in place. So my initial insights were that some funds had too much in capital projects over the next few years. Like, we looked at the street fund. It was 8 million, 8 million, 4 million in capital. And then all of a sudden, the fund balance is negative, right? That, so that's a really, that was one of the insights that I had. The other one was the SDC funds. There's 11 revenue accounts in there. The balance of five of them is gonna be under $10,000 by the end of this year. So we're really using a lot of the SDC funds this year, which is totally fine. But when we have big fund balances and we use those, people might tend to think that there's still gonna be a big fund balance a year down the road, which there's not, right? There's gonna be like $10,000. So we need to take that into account when we're picking which capital projects we're gonna do. The sewer combined fund has a very large fund balance that could be used to fund sewer capital projects. You know, it's in a great position. So while I was doing the revenue and expenditure forecasting in the general fund for the cap, parks, capital projects, that's when I started seeing that there were trends in there that were concerning me. And they're not park-specific trends, but just the general fund in whole. So that's when I transitioned over to looking at the general fund to see what, what's going on in there and let the capital planning stuff sit. I, I have it pretty much set up and ready to go. I can train my staff, and I'm ready to present it to directors, the leadership team, all that. It can obviously be refined, but it's ready. So now we're gonna dive into the general fund. Does anyone have any questions about the capital project stuff before I move on? Okay. So in the general fund, FY '23 and '24 had really large beginning fund balances because of the unusual effects in COVID. We got COVID money, two tranches of about $2 million each. The other thing that happened were that the capital projects that were approved before COVID hit were not built because COVID, you know, shut it down. So not building those capital projects meant we didn't spend the money, which inflated the beginning fund balance, okay? While I was doing the revenue and expenditure forecasting, that's when I realized that there's a lot more expenditures than revenue coming into the city. But because we have this big beginning fund balance, the trend is manageable in the near term. But we do need to develop a plan to address the situation, right? So I used the same forecasting model in the general fund expenditures, looking at five years of past data and then projecting forward five years. I didn't, it's a little different in the general fund, because the general fund has multiple departments in it, right? I didn't wanna fill the sheet with every single line item that's in there. So I just have it broken out by category totals here. There's admin with just personnel and material and services. Those are the two big ones that I just wanted to look at, because those are regular operating expenses that occur over and over again. I wanted to look at how much, okay, so PS as a percent of total is how much is personnel services a total of the whole cost of admin, right? So I wanted to see what that was. I put in the FTE number, the amount of people that were hired there. And then I came up with an average cost for the FTE for each department. And I used the average FTE cost to project the personnel cost in the future. Going forward in the future, I made this model super simple, where I didn't increase material and services drastically. It's like a 5% increase. It's like just a percent increase. And I did not add any employees or subtract any employees from any of the FTEs. For revenue, I did a similar type thing, where I've got the beginning fund balance that's calculated based off how much you brought in, how much you spent. This is your ending fund balance. And then I have each department that's in the general fund showing up there in the revenue. So I, I've just projected the revenue forward. In FY '27, I just want to let you guys know that I do have the expected million-dollar bump in property tax revenue from the URD closing in '26 showing in '27. So here we are. This is showing the resources in the general fund. So the resources are the departmental revenue. That's like the operating revenue that's brought in every year. The transfers in and other sources is overhead that the general fund charges to other departments for the work we do for them. And the beginning fund balance is the dollar amount that we're starting the year with. So if you look at the yellow line, it gets up near $25 million in '24. And that's the, that's the visual effect of COVID, of not doing the capital projects and the extra COVID money. And then in '26, you can see that, over the next two years, down to '26, the resources in the general fund are drastically reduced. And that's where my concern is, okay? So I was looking at just the operating part of the general fund. The dollars that come in just to run the general fund, not the beginning fund balance, not SDC transfers that are brought in because of capital projects. I'm basically just looking at the operating revenue and then the operating expenditures. So for operating expenditures, I'm only looking at personnel and material and services. The two things that would have to be happening if we're just running the city. I'm just excluding capital outlay, because if things got really bad, obvious, I think it would be obvious that capital outlay would be the first thing to get cut. So I'm, I'm just leaving this out of the forecasting. So again, I'm just looking at the operating performance here. And if you look at the bottom line over there on the right-hand side, you can see in '23 that there's $1.2 million more in requirements, which are expenditures, than there were in resources that came in to the general fund. And it just continues on like that going forward. So that's concerning. So we're just gonna keep digging into this, right? I started looking at personnel, because personnel is the largest chunk of the expenditures in the general fund. It's like between 80 to 100%. So I'm looking at personnel, what's going on in personnel. Personnel and costs can increase because we get new employees. The cost of benefits increase. Benefits are added for the employees, and pay increases. So I look here just at personnel. I'm looking, the top line is the revenue. This is departmental revenue. This is actual revenue on the left-hand side. And on the right-hand side is projected revenue going forward. You can see by the growth numbers that are underneath departmental revenue, we've got like 6.8% is the highest one, and 2% is the lowest one. And if we look at the personnel requirements below it, personnel varies a little bit, with the least being a negative 2.4%, but the highest being a 19%. And projecting going forward is more like a 5% growth versus a 3%-ish growth for revenue. So I also have the actual FTEs down there, because the number of employees was something that I was gonna explore later. So you can see between '22 and '24 is essentially 10 new employees. Went from 53.9 to 63.7, so a fact, an important fact. I guess also to say that in the '24 budget, almost all of the departmental revenue is required to, to pay just for our personnel costs. So I started looking at personnel in the past, because personnel hasn't always been a problem in the general fund. And I wanted to see what was going on there. So looked in prior years, and I noticed when the ratio was like 80 to 85% that the general fund was able to maintain a healthy fund balance. So personnel cost is in the 80 to 85% range. Everything was fine. So there's the two extreme methods we could use. We're talking about the general fund. Our, is either to add enough revenue to cover the FTE we're at right now, or to reduce the FTE to match the forecasted revenue right now, right? So what does that look like? I looked at the average personnel cost over since 2019. Between 2019 and 2023, it was a 9.7% increase. And '24 is a 14% increase over last year. Although, I'm gonna say that that is an inflated percentage, because when I, when I am estimating personnel for the budget, when departments ask for a new person to come in, I have to assume that they're gonna get all the benefits paid for for a whole family, and that doesn't always happen, right? So like, the city pays X amount of dollars for health insurance. I'm just gonna make up a number. Say it's 90% of health insurance. Well, if a single person comes in, and it's only them getting the health insurance, their health insurance cost is way less than if we're paying the 90% on a family. But conservatively, you have to assume all new employees will have a family, right? So the '24 budget, the personnel cost is slightly inflated because of that fact. So here is option A. This is leave the FTE as is, and then figure out what the revenue needs to be. So those numbers that are above the line, the 3.25 million, the 3.5, the 2.9, those are how much more revenue would need to come into the general fund to support the personnel cost with the ratio of 80%. The next option is to restrict the number of FTE based on these forecasts of revenue right now. So you can see that the FTE numbers drop substantially. We're at 63 in this budget, but next year would have to drop to 50 and would, you know, barely climb. and would, you know, barely climb to 52, 53. Uh, the, you know, the significant increase in personnel cost is gonna cause an effect on the general fund. Uh, the beginning balance in the general fund this year is 7.8 million. The ending fund balance, if we do, everything that's in the adopted budget right now is gonna be four and a half million. And I'm just gonna make it clear, the authorizing any of the ARPA expenditures that had come before you is directly gonna reduce that $4.5 million fund balance by whatever the cost of those ARPA projects are. And just
Quick questionnaire?
Yeah.
So the ARPA funds, they go away regardless anyway?
Well, we have the ARPA funds, so
We do now, but within two to three years, they go away because you have to expend it.
Yes. What we have to do technically is report to the treasury what we spent the money on.
Right.
And we're pretty much can spend it on whatever we want. And we can, we can say right now today that we already spent all the money. Like if we wanted to go back to last year or this year and pick projects that are already happening, we could tell the treasury, we spent the ARPA money on those projects. We do not have to spend more money to report to the treasury that we spent the money.
Okay. But as the council's already approved, some of the ARPA expenditures.
Right.
Okay. So I assume we're gonna continue with those because that's what the council has authorized at this point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any recommendation or opinion on the ARPA expenditures. I just want, I'm just trying to highlight the fact that the ARPA expenditures will reduce the fund balance in the general fund.
Okay.
If we go forward with it, but we do have the option to reporting to treasury that we've already spent money on the projects that we have on the books right now. We can do that if we want.
I gotta say, I really wish we had this information a few weeks ago because I think I would have made different choices on the ARPA funds had we known this going into it. Um, this seemed to, this seems to be pretty important information that we should have had before we allocated those funds.
Counselor, President Hensley, um, I agree. Um, the, um, ARPA allocations were adopted by resolution. They can be altered by resolution as well. Um, this, um, model was still coming together, um, when that resolution was prepared. And I felt the need to get the resolution done
Right.
so that some decisions were being made about that ARPA, you know, those ARPA proceeds. But Eric's right. I mean, we could go back and identify projects that meet the criteria that we've already spent other funds on. Um, and you could revisit that resolution if you want to.
Well, I probably will, um, ask for that, um, and when we get the mayor up to speed as well. Um, but it just, it's, I mean, we, we've given several hundred thousand dollars away to other agencies that we might have made a different choice had we known the pickle we were in. Then going back on that doesn't make us good community partners, in my opinion, but we'll have to have a discussion, I think. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Eric. Thank you.
Yeah.
Second question, Eric, on revenue. Um, so did you project in '27, seeing the expenditures coming in from urban renewal? So urban renewal sunsetting in '26, you should be seeing well over a million dollars in revenue coming back to the city's fund.
I did put that million dollars of extra, extra revenue in property tax. I did.
Okay. So you projected it in, so that amount could actually
About expenditures and I, I don't remember offhand if I did put the extra expenditures for economic development in their departmental. That's a good question.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the main thing I, point I wanted to make out is it's, it's over a million dollars in today's dollars that would come back in from urban renewal once it sunsets.
That's correct.
So in '25, '26, it's gonna be well over a million dollars because part of the industrial area still is not built up yet. And there's additional revenue that will be coming in from that as well. So we might need to get a better handle on what we project that revenue to be received in '27.
Absolutely agree. Like I said, I, that's why I kinda said it in the beginning. I just built the simple model and then as we go forward, we can fine tune it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's part of just introducing this model to you and knowing that this is not the end product, but this is the beginning and it will take, you know, refinement and it should be refined over time.
Uh, let's see. The last point on the slide is just to point out that personnel costs increase faster than our revenue increases. Well, I don't know if it's normal. It's the point of my presentation. I'm just gonna cut to the end. Uh, when we do the budget, the directors provide us lists of money that they wanna spend, right? And as the budget committee, we're really focused on expenditures, how much money we're spending. We talk about it. We wanna cut it. Um, no one really talks about trying to get more revenue in here. And I think that that needs to be a complimentary part of the budget process is focusing on revenue, getting more revenue in here. This, this, while this model is simple and shows a, a potential problem in the future, it's giving us space to really talk about revenue, coming up with ideas about how to get more revenue into the city, where to get revenue into the city. Like, I know that there are discussions about raising the street maintenance fee for one, right? But the street fund is in great shape. The park maintenance fee would be really helpful to increase that to get more money in the general fund. So that's kind of where this presentation is gonna end up is that I would like to see a lot more collaboration on trying to get more revenue sources in here, grants, uh, franchise fees. Like, that was the last thing we talked about in the leadership meeting and or brainstorming ways to get more revenue in here.
Yeah, and counsel, before you panic too much, um, with this model, um, you know, just know that it is fluid, it's dynamic. Um, finance directors and city administrators have a way of getting in there and tweaking assumptions. And, um, I have, I have never, I have worked with this kind of modeling in the past. And I have always presented this to the council and it always looks like the sky is falling. But we always figure out a way to make sure that the sky doesn't fall. So I just want you to know that, you know, that this, that we will start working with this model. Um, but it is refined, you know, it needs further refinement. And, um, I, you know, and we manage to balance the budget every year.
Yeah, I wouldn't look at this as like an emergency situation. I look at this more as like, we got a heads up and now we have time to, to make some good plans to change it. Okay, so revenue challenges. Uh, property tax revenue is the single largest revenue component in the general fund. And the city has little influence over increasing the property tax revenue. Really, the only thing you can do is the U R D because it freezes the tax base. The value of the property goes up and then they relook at the value and there's this massive increase in how much property tax can come off of there. If you don't do that, then that, that 3% property tax frozen, you know, value going up is what's restricting the property tax value in the city. So like in 2015, property tax accounted for 61% of the general fund's revenue. And in '23, it was only 48% of the general fund's revenue. So how important the property tax revenue is to the general fund, I think is just gonna be getting less and less year over year. And that's another reason why I think we need to focus on other revenue streams, getting other revenue streams in the general fund. Um, and, okay, so this, I already brought this up about how the budget process is focused on expenditures. And that, I don't, I think we could focus more of our attention on revenue generation for everyone, director, city leadership, budget committee and city council. So this is kind of what's been happening with the property tax. The graph on the top is showing how much of a factor the property tax was to all of the general fund's revenues year over year. And you can kinda see it's just slowly been dropping. And the bottom graph is total expenditures in the gold line are obviously raising, going up at a quicker rate than the property tax revenue. And because the property tax revenue is the biggest source of revenue, I think this is really the key right here. This is the key slide to look at, but expenditures are going up faster than property tax revenue. So we gotta work together to get more, more revenue in the city. Um, so this is the last slide, yeah. Is it? Uh, so the company shortfall can be addressed using a combination of expenditure reduction and revenue increases. Expenditure only focused is good for short-term, but because costs seem to rise faster than revenue, it kinda leads you into a vicious cycle of having to cut more and more every year if you're not gonna try to add revenue. Revenue generation may demand a longer-term implementation. Um, you gotta increase fees, adopt new fees, create new revenue sources, and that takes time. There's political issues involved in it. And it will take the cooperation, consideration, understanding and teamwork by all of the city's leadership to impose these financial requirements onto the citizens of Canby. This process is gonna take time, but I think it's really critical that the city works on trying to get more revenue. And, uh, obviously a blended approach is gonna create the most benefit over time. And that's it. Questions?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions and some thoughts on all of this.
Turn your mic on.
I have some questions and general thoughts on this whole topic as we have now finished it. Um, in those, uh, in, in that general fund money, does that include the reserves? Or are the reserves a separate number elsewhere that are not included in that like $4.5 million? That's also the reserves.
That is the reserves, yeah.
Okay. Um, what is this? How do we make this? One of the things that I was curious about is this forecasting model and everything that goes with it. Is there a way that we can make this standard operating procedure within the city that is required, regardless of who fills what position and who comes and goes? So that way, we know that there will, we know that the one thing that's constant in the world is change and that will continue in the city. Uh, is there a way of making this so that it is required regardless? Because the way, my fear is that Eric has put all of this work into this plan and then a different finance director, maybe not the next one, but the one after could come in and say, well, I'm not using this. I have my own thing. Out it goes. And then we end up back in the situation that we're in. How do we set future councils and city folk up for success by making something like this requirement? Is, is a thought.
Um, my thought is that, um, that absolutely a city should be doing this. Whether it's this model or another finance director comes in and has a different way of doing it, because everybody's gonna be kind of comfortable with their way of doing it. Is, again, gonna be dependent on that, that, that individual. The important point is that this should be done year after year after year. My recommendation is that it is presented as part of the goal-setting session so that, um, the council is cognizant of its financial conditions as it sets its goals for the year.
Okay.
So I would, and I would, one of the questions that I was going to ask the council was that, um, that mid-year budget review that you're talking about, Counselor Patton, this could be presented to the budget committee at that mid-year budget review.
Okay.
Um, and, um, you know, in the future, if you want to involve the budget committee year after year, you know, that's a council, that's the council prerogative. Um, but the council should be, um, presented with this kind of financial modeling at least once a year.
Okay, excellent. The next thing I have on my list is, it was brought up about the U R D sunsetting. I'm sorry. Uh, I think we have spent that U R D money twice over. Uh, and based on the percentages of costs and how they have trended for the last several years, I don't see that going back down to three to four, three to 5%. And so that dollar that we are, that we are taking in is not gonna keep pace with what we are having to pay for the, the same services. And that sort of brings me to this epiphany that I had the other day in chatting with citizens and stuff is that, and this is not just the city of Canby, this to me, it seems like it's the whole state of Oregon. Uh, the citizens want city services that are the equivalent of a Cadillac. But they are only willing to pay for city services that are the equivalent of a Prius. And how we get them to understand that you cannot have that, you cannot walk into a car dealership and say, I want a Cadillac and I'm only gonna give you the money for a Prius. They're going to throw you out. So we have to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna do this. Well, so the citizens don't come out here with pitchforks and, uh, torches and burn this place to the ground. That's something that has stuck into my head a little bit.
And all cities are, you're right, all cities are dealing with this issue.
It's a mess. Uh, this capital project team, something that I wrote down here was, would it make sense, and this is just a thought, to have a member of council and/or a member of, a citizen member of the budget committee serve as an individual on that group? Even if it's just a silent person who is there to kind of watch over things? So that way, if something happens, there's somebody that has, you know, some inside information about what's going on there. And, you know, spreading that tribal knowledge out to other groups that aren't just in the city is something that, that came to mind. Um, duh, 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 duh. The last thing was that, you know, there was a, there was a question about, you know, us not seeing the council, not seeing this information and stuff. And I, I would just use what we're going through as a cautionary tale to this council and councils that will come before us. This is what happens when you burn everything to the ground. When you burn things to the ground and you have a mass exodus of city leadership, these are the cracks that then open up that things fall through. Uh, and I think COVID had a big play in this because there was a lot of stuff that went on through that. But, uh, it's just something for folks to keep in mind moving forward. So that is, that is the things that came to mind for me in listening to this.
Any other questions from council?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
First, more of a statement first, Eric. Thank you for the work on this.
Absolutely.
You know, and this is exactly what I was looking for in the last, in our very first budget presentation. Because as council, we're responsible for accountability and especially in finance. And we didn't have this information. So I, you know, I, I applaud that. I have all the faith in the world that our department heads and our leadership team can address this issue. I don't think we need to. We just need to know that we have a balanced budget and where the money's going to in the projects. I have all the faith that our leadership team will take care of that for us. You know, so I think we're headed in the right direction with this. Uh, I think it's good information. This is exactly what I was looking for as far as accountability of our revenues moving forward and stuff, because I have to deal with that every year. You know, and projecting out two to three years out to make sure when we put an employee on, we can guarantee that employee a job, you know, for the sustainability of, of that person's career. Otherwise, let's not bring them on because that's not fair to the employees. You know, so, um, I have all the faith in the world that the leadership team will get this balanced out. I also think that, uh, bringing this up in our mid-year reviews, uh, to the budget committee and getting the budget committee's education around this as well too in preparation for the next budget session with our budget committee. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mike, I just wanna address the fact that I, I have been so busy trying to get caught up since the day I got here that July was literally the first I've been able to do this forecasting stuff, which this is the stuff that really interests me, right? And I totally agree that the mid-year budget review is a good time to do this because this information will be shared before the budget goes to the budget committee and will be aware, the city council will be aware of it before they adopt the budget.
Any other questions?
Couple of questions, couple of questions. Um, on your projected revenue table that you
On your projected revenue table that you had up, it was like this last slide or the second to the last slide? I don't know how quickly you can go there. And, and Counselor Davis was, was touching on this, but it seems to me that the sunset of the U R D ought to reflect that increase in revenue, and it doesn't, and I'm not sure. Yeah, yeah, I think if we look at that last. So right here, if we look at the property tax revenue. Oh, I see, it ends in 2023.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
That might answer my question then.
I bet it does.
I wouldn't mind seeing what it looks like compared to the red line on the bottom if we could project that out in the future, because that, see, that should help a little bit.
That's right.
The other thing, like you said, Counselor Patton says perhaps a Budget Committee member or city councillor. I'm a little reluctant for a city councillor. My three-year anniversary on council comes up in January, and I, I'm the second most senior person here now. So I'm not sure that's the kind of stability we're looking for. What was the makeup that you would envision?
For the team?
Yeah, for that kind of team.
The city administrator, the city attorney, all the directors, maybe the directors, secondhand, right-hand person. I wouldn't be opposed to a council member or a Budget Committee personally, person being in there to, to view, but mostly just having a team in there, especially all the directors, because they're really in charge of their budgets, so. And it just builds like a cooperative atmosphere, right?
Thank you. Counselor Sterns, did you have anything?
Just a few thoughts. One, I do like the idea of sort of brainstorming in maybe a work session or something where we could go over the costs and the revenue opportunities. I feel like there could be some benefit to have community input. So if, for example, if we want to raise a revenue, obviously that means somebody's going to have to pay more money than they're already paying. And it's a good idea to have the stakeholders that might be doing that pain to come in and give the input, because one thing for us to make a decision and says, you shall pay more money. Another thing to say, hey, what can we do? We need this money for this per X, Y, and Z. So I think it's really important, we're talking about raising revenues, that we get citizen input involved and let people give their worries. Because in essence, if people aren't consenting to their revenue, it's much harder to enforce, you know? And we're not going to have everybody agreeing, but a large portion agreeing. So that's one of the things that, that come to mind is the importance of getting input from the, from the, not just for a yes or no vote, but for input ideas. The other thing, I do like the idea of having people sit on, citizens sit on some of these planning things. One of the big obstacles is that very few people, I, I think, understand funds-based accounting versus profit and loss-based accounting, and there's some education that needs to happen to avoid a lot of confusion on that, that, that aspect. But I think a lot of the people outside the traditional funds-based nonprofit accounting can have ideas on saving money, even though a little education on funds-based might help people out. So those are the, my thoughts, I don't know if that makes any sense or not, or that's just babbling.
No, no, Counselor, it, it does make a lot of sense. And the beauty of, you know, having a tool like this, whether it's this tool or again, some other finance director comes in and has an equally robust tool is that you can use it in a public environment. You can show, you know, if we increase this revenue or we, you know, reappropriate these dollars over here or whatever the council decides to do, you can literally show. And when this thing is, you know, is operating from the, the power or from, you know, God, I wanted to say locust, locust, Excel, thank you, shows my age. That, you know, you can literally show the fund balance, that bend, you know, that bend in the curves, and you can see what effect, you know, let's increase this, or let's decrease this, or let's put this money over there, and you can see the effect immediately. So it's a very good community education tool.
Thank you. And Counselor Maldonado, did you have anything to add or a question before we wrap this up?
I did not, thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Counsel President Hensley?
Yes.
Real quick, I just want to clarify something. My fourth grade teacher had a sign over her chalkboard that said, "Make sure your brain is in gear before engaging your mouth." So I'm going to use this principle right now. When I was talking about people burning the city to the ground, I used the word "you." I was not specifically referring to any one person. I was using "you" in the most generalist of terms. So I don't want anybody to take offense to that. I just want to clarify that statement, so.
Okay. That is much appreciated. Thank you, Counselor Patton. Okay, well, that, unless Eileen has anything else to add, I think that brings us to the end of our work session. And we are going to take a five-minute break and resume at 7:02.
Okay.
All right.
It happens. Oh, Counselor Hensley, you are muted. Counsel President Hensley, you're muted.
That was my ode to Jason Patton. Welcome, Canby, to the City Council meeting for October 4th, 2023. If you will please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, I thank you for the leaders before us that please be with us to make good decisions and help, offer us good discernment in guiding things and policymaking for this wonderful community that we are so blessed to enjoy. I thank you for our first responders, and please keep them out of harm's way. And thank you for all the, many, many blessings that this, this community brings us. In Jesus's name, amen. So Davis, will you lead us since you're in the room? Thank you. We did just return from a work session. For those just joining us, we had a discussion regarding general fund revenue and expenditure forecasting. So thank you again to Eric, our Finance Director, for putting that tool together and presenting it tonight. We'll be having further discussions about that, I'm certain, in the future. Okay, first up on the agenda, we have a new police officer to welcome. Hello, Chief Trow.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Tonight, we have a special event of a swearing-in of a brand-new police officer. What a crowd. Thank you for coming to this, to this event. So I'm going to call our new officer, Mark Y. up here. I'm going to say a few things.
I need to be near the mic for it.
Oh, gotcha.
That makes sense.
So Mark Y. is our newest police officer. He just started a couple of weeks ago on September 18th. He's currently in our field training phase, which he's assigned to a field training officer to learn the procedure and learn our city and stuff like that. So he's with his first coach right now, and he goes through three other coaches. So a little bit about Mark. He was born in the Philippines, and he moved to Oregon at a young age with his family, and I think some of his family is here. He grew up in the city of Tigard and graduated from Tigard High School. He attended Pacific University and received his bachelor's degree in early education. I believe he wanted to be a teacher at one point.
Being a cop's a little bit cooler.
So he did try a few jobs in education in the medical field, and he was drawn to law enforcement, and he was hired by the Hubbard Police Department. If you recall, we've hired a couple of other officers from the Hubbard Police Department. So it's been a good training ground for us. So he's been there about two years. I need to note, so right now, if you're a lateral officer in good standing, like Officer Y., you could pretty much pick any agency you want in the state of Oregon. And we are very fortunate, Mark applied for us, and we chose Mark to be part of our team. So thank you. So one of his aspirations as a police officer is to be a school resource officer. He wants to foster positive relationships among law enforcement, teachers, and youth, as well as promote a positive climate. Mark told me one of the reasons he chose to apply at Canby was because of its community support. We have great community support and council support for our law enforcement and first responders. And he felt that our department appreciates its staff and trains them well. In his free time, he enjoys hiking, going to the gym, watching movies, and spending time with family. So one warning, if he ever asks you to go for a hike, be careful, because one of his most favorite hikes was a 26-mile hike up in Leavenworth, Washington. So be, be warned. Mark is married and has a one-and-a-half-year-old beautiful daughter that I'll let to him introduce. And go ahead, introduce your wife, family, and anybody else here.
So here's my daughter, Sophia. She loves being the center of attention here. And here's my lovely wife, lovely beautiful wife, Carla. She's a teacher at Moore's Marion. Here are my parents. And I got three younger brothers in the back, and my best friend Donovan. How many oldest still?
All right, and this time I'm going to call Judge Graff up for the actual swearing-in.
We both have to be close to the mic.
Okay, sounds good.
I did instructions on this every time.
I'll try to talk loud, too.
Okay, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mark Y.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and uphold the constitutions.
I will support and uphold the constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Canby.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Canby.
Remaining in compliance with professional standards.
Remaining in compliance of professional standards.
Established by the department's mission.
Established by the department's mission.
Values and professional code of ethics.
Values and professional ethics.
Department policies and directives.
Department policies and directives.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the police officer for the city of Canby, Oregon.
Can you repeat that, please?
Hard to swallow.
Yeah.
Faithfully perform the duties of police officer for the city of Canby, Oregon.
Faithfully, a little slow on that. I might have to read it. Faithfully perform the duties of the police officer for the city of Canby.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, one last thing. Who would you like to have pin your badge?
Awesome. Sophie, you want to be up here? Sophie, Finn, come back. Thank you.
So welcome to the city of Canby, Officer Y. Is there anything you would like to say?
I just want to say thank you, everyone here, for, for the opportunity to work for the city of Canby. I've heard many great things, and I wanted to be a part of it. If you ever see me on the side of the road, wave me down. I love answering questions about myself or anything about the job. And again, thank you very much for the, the opportunity and the support.
Thank you, Officer Y, and welcome to Canby. I'll have to be one of those people that wave you down, so I can shake your hand, since I'm not in the room tonight. All right, thank you, Chief Trow. Next on the agenda is the introduction of new employees, and that would be Ms. Eileen Stein, please.
We're going to let Chief Trow go first, and then I have an introduction as well.
Thank you. Since I'm up here, I'm going to introduce our newest record specialist. I'm super excited to introduce Kelly Bartholmule, if you want to come up here, Kelly. So Kelly started with us back in June 20, and so she's been here a few months, and she's hit the ground running. During the last three months, she's learned a lot about police records and has been a great addition to our team. Police records is the backbone of our department. We could not do our service without them, so they are a very important piece of our department. A little bit about Kelly. Kelly's an Oregon native and Canby resident for the last eight years. For the last 10 years, she has worked in the medical field as an office manager. Kelly is married to her high school sweetheart, Mark, who I believe is here, for 33 years. They have two adult children and a son-in-law. In her spare time, she enjoys walking and puzzles, but mostly spending time with family and friends. She is thrilled to be supporting law enforcement in her community, and we are thrilled to have her. So welcome, Kelly. I told her she would have the same thing, so.
So, counsel, as you know, today was, oh, sorry. Today was our library director, Danny Smith's last day. And Marissa Eli is on our library staff already. She's the library supervisor until today. And she is the interim library director. And we will try her out, and we will see if she's going to be the permanent director. But she is the interim library director for the county. So do you want to say a few words?
I do.
Welcome, Marissa.
Thank you. I actually volunteered to say something, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. So good evening, counsel and the Canby community. My name is Marissa Ely, and I am both excited and incredibly humbled to be the new interim library director for the Canby Public Library. I'm hoping many of you already recognize me. I hold both a master's in library and information science and a doctorate in educational leadership. I have also held several positions in this library since 2017, so I feel very prepared to be in this role. We, as a library in a city, have gone through a lot of change this year, and we have several new library staff members that have come on in recent months. Both myself and our new staff group are ready to continue moving this library in the direction that the grown Canby community deserves. We're looking to hopefully expand or shift our hours, create a new space for Canby tweens, make our collections more robust, organized, and easier to find, continue providing unique programming for all ages, reach more of the community that may not know about the myriad of services we do provide, and of course, apply for any and all library-related grants. We're also hoping to get community feedback so we can be sure we're meeting the needs of the city. I personally believe that moving forward is only possible with a collective vision that we all help co-create. I don't want to take up too much of your time here this evening, but I want this community and its leadership to know that I will put in the work and I will be visible and available in the student's. This library is such a special place, and myself and the library staff are ready to show you what we can do and how much we care. Thank you for all your support thus far, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Eileen, and thank you, Marissa. On the agenda, we have citizen input and community announcements. I see no one online, but we do have a card from Carol Palmer. Carol?
I think I'm on.
Yep, we can hear you.
Carol Palmer, Canby, Oregon. I live on North Ponderosa Street. And I am here to talk a little bit about the DeMuro Award. And the first thing I want to do is I want to thank our city administrator and our economic development director, Eileen and Jamie, for attending the event. The actual DeMuro Award event occurred on the 22nd, on Friday, and And um, it was great to have someone there officially representing the city. Now, I wasn't able to attend, but I understand the event was very nice. And so I'm here to talk a little bit about trying to trying to bring the party back to Canby and doing a little recognition here as well. It seems appropriate to toot our horn and talk about how great it is to have this fabulous historic building that Hanlon has done such a great job restoring um, in our community and in our downtown. So I have been coordinating with Tyler Neiser and also with Belinda Goody and Mary Hanlon. And we have um, October nineteenth, so I'm here to tell all of you to invite you now. October nineteenth at four o'clock at City Hall, there will be, rather than a ribbon cutting, it's going to be an unveiling of the the plaque, which I think is going to have to be placed inside the building, but we'll try and put it in a place where there's going to be some traffic. I think that's Mary's plan. Um, there will be a few speakers, and we would love to have someone from the city council available. And I think Tyler's probably gonna be coming around and asking some of you to volunteer to maybe say a few words. And I know we'll have some folks there from Restore Oregon from their board. So uh, please join us on the nineteenth at City Hall, the historic City Hall at four o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
You bet.
Okay, Maya, have we got any new ones? I don't see anybody on the list.
Yeah, we do have one more.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, give that to, there you go. All right, well, tell us who you are and why you're here.
Don't buzz me around. I know, uh, I'm Daniel F. Charjok. Uh, I am here today because I coach soccer in the city of Canby. And it's been a little bit stressful to do that for the past couple of years. Um, most stressful this year because the fields that we're using are in um, Caris. And then also, now we're not just doing Caris, but now we're doing North Marion also. And as a resident of Canby, with so many good fields around here, it would be nice if we could use the facilities or whatever, the field spaces in town. Um, in addition to that, it would be great if there was a better facility for soccer itself. Um, there are, there have been challenges with Mole Hills. Right now in Caris, the the fields have a gnarly slope to them, which makes it difficult for playing soccer, especially for young kids. And I just feel that the investment in our kids is one of the best investments we can make, um, especially for active living lifestyle. And soccer is very near and dear to me, and there's a lot of kids that really wanna play. Um, not just fall soccer, but spring soccer. And um, I'd really like the community to get behind that. It'd be great if there was a more cohesive movement around sports in general for kids in the area. A lot of times, there's frustration around basketball overlapping with baseball, or soccer, or swimming, or what have you. Parents are frustrated, and I hear a lot about that. I would like to participate more in this. Like to figure out what opportunities there are to improve. I'd also like soccer season to be more than five games. I'd like to start soccer practice a couple of weeks before our first soccer game, rather than the day before our first soccer game. I'd like to get our jerseys uh, a week before pictures, instead of the night before pictures. I'd like to invest in this. I'd like to know how I can do that. And I'd like to figure out how we can support the community in having better experience for sports. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And we did uh, share a telephone conversation, and and I did invite him to come to the city council. Tell that the city council know what he told me. And I would strongly encourage you to come and talk to the Park and Rec uh, committee as well. And uh, be involved with us.
I'd love to.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Thanks for coming.
Ooh, one last plug. We have the best outdoor pickleball court around. We don't have anything indoor. So what do, I mean, that place is packed all the time with kids, adults. Is if there's momentum to carry that forward, I called Fair Grounds. It's like, you guys should do that in the new facility. But I don't know if they're going to. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Council President Hensley.
Yes.
I move to, I haven't done this before, so I'm gonna wing it here. Uh, I moved to approve the consent agenda consisting of the August second, twenty twenty-three work session and city council meeting minutes, appointment of uh, Jake Hill, Jake, right? Jake Hill uh, to the Canby Utility Board effective October ninth, twenty twenty-three, with the term ending February twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four. And reappointment of Member Scott Sassy to the Canby Budget Committee with a term ending on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Patton and seconded by Counselor Davis, I believe it was, uh, to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the ma- uh, meeting minutes for August twenty, sorry, August second, twenty twenty-three, city council and work session meetings. Appointment of Jake Hill to the Canby Utility Board effective October ninth, twenty twenty-three, with a term ending February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. And the reappointment of Member Scott Sassy to the Canby Budget Committee with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes six-zero. Next up, we have ordinances, resolutions and ordinances. We have ordinance number one-six-one-two. This is for first reading, so Eileen.
So for this item, I would like to call Jerry Nelson to the table and have Jerry explain this ordinance.
Hello, council. Jerry Nelson, Public Works Director. Um, this is a um, ordinance that we would like you to approve for custodial services throughout the city of Canby. Five of our, five buildings that we own. And um, we had a long-term custodial service that we used for a while. That went away. We tried in-house. We had problems finding the employees to maintain that. Um, so we hired a uh, uh, went out for three bids, did a six-month um, contract with the current con- uh, uh, contractor we have now. And in the meantime, while we did that, we went out for RFP for custodial services. And uh, we had a scoring team. We had two applicants, two people applied for the um, for the custodial deal. We had a scoring team, and they uh, selected this company. And we'd like you to approve this ordinance for a year, um, one-year service of custodial services. Is, is there any questions?
Um, these for, I guess, this building? What, which other?
It would be um, this building, uh, Public Works, wastewater, this uh, the police station, transit building. Um, did I name five? It's all five of our city buildings. Yes, uh, the only buildings that they wouldn't be doing would be the swim center and the adult center.
What about the bathrooms at the parks?
The, the bathroom at the parks are maintained and cleaned by our Parks Department.
Okay, any other questions for Jerry? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion.
Um, I move to approve ordinance number sixteen-twelve, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract with MSNW Group LLC in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars per year for custodial services for the city of Canby to a second reading October eighteenth.
Second.
I was moved by Counselor Bangs and seconded by Counselor Maldonado to approve ordinance number one-six-one-two and ordinance, ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with MSNW Group LLC in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for custodial services for the city of Canby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, Eileen, another first reading. We have ordinance number one-six-one-three.
Which is an ordinance authorizing um, this interim city administrator to execute a contract with Jarrett, Jarrett Walker and Associates um, to provide an update to the Transit Master Plan, and Todd is here for this item.
Okay, Todd?
My name is Todd Wood, the Transit Director. Uh, Transit Master Plan, uh, just like all the plans in the city, is the guiding document for the Transit Department. It is the plan that tells us what we need to do going into the future. Um, our plan lasts about five years. The last one was done in twenty seventeen. Uh, we use the plan not just to guide us, but also every time I apply for a grant, the state wants to know what plan it falls in, in the city's documents, so it's very important for us to apply for future grants. So we went out for RFP. Well, first of all, last year I applied for a grant for it. So uh, we were awarded a STIF uh, grant for it, which will pay for eighty percent of our Transit Master Plan. Uh, we went out for RFP. We got three bids back. Uh, we scored it, and we came up with Jared Walker and Associates uh, to do the Transit Master Plan. They are the same folks that did the last Transit Master Plan, so it's fortuitous as they know our system very well. Expected to take about ten months and cost about two hundred thousand dollars, of which we'll pay about thirty-nine thousand. And the grant will cover the other hundred and fifty-nine thousand, give or take.
Okay, any questions for Todd?
Yes, President Hensley, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Davis.
Okay, proposed motion. I move uh, to approve ordinance sixteen-thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Jared Walker and Associates in the amount of uh, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and nine dollars to provide an update to the Transit Master Plan and move it to second reading on October eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three.
And was that, was that Counselor Maldonado?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. It's been moved by Counselor Davis and seconded by Counselor Maldonado to approve ordinance number one-six-one-three, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Jarrett Walker and Associates in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and nine dollars to provide an update to the Transit Master Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? That passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda of resolutions and ordinances. We come to old business. Eileen, do we have any updates on the city administrator and city attorney recruitment processes?
Uh, I did wanna discuss the city administrator or city um, attorney recruitment, but um, I didn't know if there were any updates on the city. Okay. Um, so um, now is the moment in time, I recall, uh, council, you had a discussion probably a couple of months back now about moving ahead with the city attorney recruitment. Once you got to the point of having finalists, which for the city administrator, which I understand is imminent. So um, so the question is, do you want us to begin the recruitment for the city attorney now?
Thank you, Eileen. I, actually, um, I'm thinking that I would like to wait. And the reason is because things are seemingly moving smoothly with the services we have currently, as I understood it from my conversation with Eileen recently. And um, I would like to pump this probably at least three more months, if not six. And the reason is I would like to have enough data to do a good cost analysis on bringing on a full-time person with their salary and benefits and perks, et cetera, versus how much it's costing us for the exact amount of services that we're using, whether we keep this current firm or go with another. But we, if we have six months with the data, we can do a good comparison. And I, I think that that would be the best way to make the best decision uh, for Canby going forward. Um, any other thoughts, Counselor Davis?
I have a thought on that.
Okay, sorry, my screen didn't switch yet.
That is not what we agreed upon. When we had a conversation as a council, it was decided as it was recommended as a group that we would phase these in. It has been, if memory serves me correctly, when a cost analysis was done of whether we contract this city attorney work out or we hire a full-time person in, it is more expensive to have the work contracted out than it is to do it in-house. Uh, I am a firm believer that we made it clear that we need to phase these in, and I want to see that process continued. So I am for, unless there is some uh, extenuating circumstances that I am not aware of that is impacting city staff and the firm that's doing this recruitment, I want to see the, the phase start of, of searching for the city attorney.
Counselor Banks.
Thank you. I am also in favor of moving forward now with the search for the city attorney. I believe it is considerably more expensive for the same legal services that we had before um, to, to have that with the, the contracted services we're going with now. I'm pretty sure that that came up when we were discussing it the first time. Um, so, you know, for cost alone, I think we should move forward uh, and find our new city attorney.
Counselor Davis, so are you just resting your hand or are you raising your hand?
Oh.
Okay. Um, Eileen, um, in our discussion, you did say we, we would need about six months with the data to actually make a, a cost analysis that was actually accurate. Is that, is that not how I, am I recalling our conversation incorrectly?
No, we, we did have that conversation. Um, um, so um, you know, three to six months of data would be, would, would certainly um, tell um, how much we are spending um, on outside council services. So, um, but um, Counselor President Hensley, um, Counselor Sterns had his hand up, so.
Okay, Counselor Sterns.
Sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand or not, but um.
Well, you can use the raise hand function on your Zoom too.
Oh, is I supposed to, okay.
That helps. That helps me because I can't, the cameras aren't always on you.
Oh, okay.
We're not on Zoom.
Okay. Um, my question is, I guess there has been a discussion about costs, and it was done prior to me being appointed, so I was wondering if it's possible that I see the data that was maybe presented earlier so I could form an intelligent opinion. Otherwise, I'll have to give an unintelligent opinion, which people don't need, so.
I, I, I'm not aware that there has been an analysis, there certainly has not been an analysis since I've been here um, since the middle of May. Um, so if there was an analysis that was done, it would have been done um, before that. And I could, I could switch, you know, I could research that and find out.
Okay, it sounds like there was some sort of cost discussion earlier. And, and so being completely unaware of the money either way, I, I would like to see that. I can see, I can imagine lots of benefits for having somebody in-house, and I can imagine a lot of benefits for having contracted it out, but it's just all my imagination at this point.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't recall any numbers being presented to us. It's been kind of a, a lot of assumptions.
I do have my hand up now.
Okay, Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Um, after our budget presentation that we had today and where we're just starting to do some more forecasting and stuff, uh, and not exactly, I'm sorry, I don't totally understand what it is the city attorney will be doing for us now that he's not doing court, I believe. And there's some other functions that the old city attorney did do that we don't do now. So if, I'd like to maybe move this to, I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to move it to a work session so that we can actually see the data of exactly what it is the position's gonna be doing. And then the other part is we're gonna have our mid-year budget uh, review here soon too, to where we can get a better idea of how we're doing in the budget. Um, yeah, I'd like to see this moved to a work session for further information.
I think that's a great idea. Uh, Counselor Maldonado, your thoughts?
I can go either way on it. We did uh, initially agree that this was the route we wanted to go where, once we were at the halfway point with the city administrator, we would move ahead with the city attorney. However, I would, I would definitely like to see numbers. Uh, I know we did initially, we were initially informed that it would be a greater cost to outsource than have in-house, but I would like to see numbers so I can be definitively informed. And I would not be opposed to putting it into a work session.
Okay.
Counselor President Hensley, I have my hand raised again.
And the, and the camera panned away just in time. I see that. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Patton, go ahead.
Uh, I would say that if we would like to, if we're, if the, if it is a council's, if it is a majority of council's will to wish to do another work session on this, I would, I would like to see if we're gonna do a cost, and I am one hundred percent positive that we were presented with some sort of numbers.
I would, I would like to see if we're going to do a cost, and I am 100% positive that we were presented with some sort of numbers that said that moving forward with a city attorney, rather than contracting the workout, was going to be advantageous for the city. I was not dreaming when I heard that, that, that talked about. It was a thing. Second of all, if we do this, then what I want to see overlaid in those numbers is what sort of questions we are normally asking an internal city attorney on a day-to-day basis that we may not be asking a contract a city attorney because we don't want to worry about spending that cost. I think that for the police folks, they are, they were constantly in communication with our city attorney to cover their butts so that this city would not get involved in a bunch of lawsuits. And I would hate to see us pinch a penny on trying to save city attorney services by not bringing it in-house and then have our tukuses sued by somebody because the police or somebody in the city has made a poor, poor decision or said something out of turn, and then our insurance rates go up. So if we're going to do that cost analysis, it needs to include that.
And I would agree with that, Councilor Patton. That was one element that I did discuss with Eileen as well. So if it pleases the rest of my colleagues, I would like to talk to the mayor about scheduling a work session, and I do mean sooner rather than later, so.
Councilor Stern has his hand up.
Councilor Stern?
I was wondering, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilor Patton. Maybe the police off, police chief himself can, can, can talk about whether or not his legal, since he's here. If he feels hesitant to talk to the council, to our city council, not council, but city attorney. Because it's contracted out versus an in-house. Or maybe that could be prepared for a different, so I don't want to put you on the spot.
Chief, do you want to speak on that?
But I just thought, since he asked the question and you're here.
If it's something important, I, I have no problem calling our contracted council out, right? You do, if you have someone in-house, you'll call them more just on little things where I'm not going to, I'm not going to make that call. But on something important for sure, no problem calling.
But there is, you do see there is a reduction in legal communication because it's outsourced. So that's something I want to, that is one of the problems with outside contractors is, I know people are hesitant sometimes to call. I know I get that myself. For my career, people sometimes are hesitant to call me when I, you know, start the clock running. But like I say, as far as the, the pros and cons, that needs to be taken into consideration.
And I, I would just like to preface this by saying that I find that the, at least from what I can see, what services we have received from David and other folks are not lacking. It's just, I think that, and you know, skewer me for trying to hang my hat on tradition, but for, even when I was originally on city council, the city has had a city attorney. Cities, from what I understand, cities of our size and larger, or our size and smaller have in-house city attorneys. And so I, I think that makes sense.
You're muted, Tracy.
Okay. Well, first I want to credit Councilor Patton for remembering his mic, and apparently it's an affliction that's been passed on to me. I apologize, everyone. Um, I, I do hear many of us wanting to see numbers. So is there room on next, the next meeting's agenda to add a work session? Maya?
No.
Okay, how about the first one? Well, yeah, it's true. We have, we have to get those interviews done. So what about the first one in November possibly? That would give you a little more time to get data.
Yeah, so that agenda, you have, we have scheduled an update on the comprehensive plan again, so we're going to have to kind of juggle some priorities for work session time, so.
I would not be opposed to an additional Wednesday. This is an important subject.
I, I would concur with Council President Hensley. I think we are starting to get a logjam here, and I think it is time that we kind of look at our calendars and figure out if there's a, I would not be opposed to sorting out an alternate time. The, the problem I find with these work sessions is that the topics that we are wanting to discuss are not, they're meaty topics. And we shove it into an hour and we don't really get a chance to flesh it out. And I think this and maybe some other things, we need to have like a work session Palooza, some, some evening where it's like two, three hours of just doing these sort of things. And I remember back when I was originally on council, we did not do work sessions at this dais. We did work sessions around a table, and it was more of a conversation rather than a presentation. And I think that this council is missing that collaboration. And I would like to see something like that brought back.
Yeah, I remember when we had work sessions in the conference room. I think they were more productive, to be honest. So let's, let's work with the mayor on a, on a, like a day that's not necessarily a council day, as Council Patton has a very good point, that this is not necessarily going to be a one-hour discussion. So can you work with the mayor on scheduling a time?
I absolutely will, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And you do have a lot on your plate.
Yeah. Okay, and council comments and liaison reports. I will start with Councilor Patton.
This might shock you all, but I really don't have anything tonight. My committees really haven't met. This might disgust people, but I am hot and heavy into preparing my house for Christmas as well as Halloween, so I'm preoccupied. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Maldonado?
Christmas already, really?
I know. What about Thanksgiving?
I gotta start this early. It's a one-man show.
I have, I have nothing to report as mine have not met as well.
Okay. And likewise, we got Sea Forest tomorrow and Traffic Safety is not till next week, so I don't really have much either. There is First Thursday though in town, so I will announce that since I did not see Jamie in the room. And we'll go on to Councilor Davis.
Thank you. Fire department wise, the fire board, we swore in division chief Matt Dale to deputy fire chief, so second in charge of the fire department. And the board is also, has made a conditional job offer to a gentleman for the fire chief's position, who is now in background review, and that's going to take four to, four to six weeks to go through the background review. And we'll wait until that time to make the announcement for the gentleman that they made the conditional job offer for. Park and Rec, we haven't met. I gave a lengthy report at the last city council meeting on Park and Rec. Biggest item we have there is moving forward on sports fields and working with COGEO, trying to find a location of the sports fields. And I believe, Eileen, we asked for a report from Jamie on the hotel as well as the sports field, if we can get that update on how we're doing on locations for those.
Yeah, that's one of those backlog items. I'm looking for time to, to have an executive session. It's possible that we might be able to do that as soon as October 18th, if the business items on the council's agenda kind of remain, like if this is all we did is the second readings, we might be able to fit it in next week or the next regular meeting.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jim. And it was honored to be part of that interview panel process. So thank you for inviting me to take part in that day. Councilor Banks?
Thank you. The, the big news with the library is the change from our director to our new interim director, which we saw tonight. It was with a lot of enthusiasm that I went into the meeting of the Heritage and Landmarks Commission. Haven't met since July. That meeting was Monday. I had it in my calendar for Tuesday, so I missed it, much to my grave disappointment. But Tyler Nizer was kind enough to tell me that they're putting an RFP out, the city is, for reconnaissance level survey, which is a survey of properties in, in the city. And there's an active effort to recruit members for the city's Heritage and Landmarks Commission. If any of you all are out there interested in looking at serving for your community, we could use you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Banks. And finally, last but not least, Councilor Sterns, do you have liaison reports?
Yeah, I was asked to be liaison to the Canby School Board. I went to their meeting. I don't remember anything from that meeting that I thought needs to be addressed here. Next meeting, I think I'll introduce myself, but they have a little harder time doing public comment there than here. I, we did have a transit board meeting last week, and we talked, there wasn't a, a quorum there, so no business took place, but I got myself educated, a lot of the transit issues. One thing I wanted to bring up to the council that maybe something that put on our radar is the Canby transit area transit tax happens to have the same initials as a Oregon tax that was recently passed. They call it the Oregon CAT tax, and then we have the Canby CAT tax, which causes some confusion amongst some of my clients. And so something to consider, we might want to change the name of the tax to something, I don't think the state of Oregon will want to change the name of their CAT tax to something different, although we had ours first. But something to just think about.
Good points. Thank you, Councilor Sterns. That brings us to interim city administrator, business and staff report. Eileen?
Okay, I have a few items to discuss tonight. The first is turning our attention to next year's goals. Started to reach out to the person who conducted the goal-setting session this year. She's already booked for January, so I reserved the date. Last year, you had a goal-setting session on a Friday. So I reserved Friday, February 9th of 2024 for that date. So we can lock her in if that works for your calendars. So February 9th, yeah.
I have a conflict that day, actually.
Uh-oh.
Tracy, did you say you had a conflict?
I do.
How about the next Friday, the sixth?
Sixteenth. That one I can probably make work.
Okay. It'll be.
All day.
All day.
I might. Does Tendai have a specific Northwest Christmas tree? From last year. Yeah, I can, I will see. It's a long one. Which is good.
Yeah.
Answer.
Yeah. So I will see if the consultants is available on the 16th instead.
Okay. Thank you.
Don Hardy is prepared to, in the next couple of weeks, he's preparing to send out a postcard to interested to property owners that are possible candidates for the urban growth boundary area analysis. Once that postcard goes out, it will be very public, what the city intends to do. So I wanted you to know that in the next couple of weeks that that postcard was going out. And that that may begin to raise questions that you have. So we will keep you informed as that postcard goes out. That's again, part of the reason for the November 1st work session. But I just wanted you to know that once that postcard goes out and it literally identifies candidate parcels on there that are all part of the one-mile radius that the state requires that you identify, that people might start getting excited in a positive way or negative way.
Is this for the urban growth boundaries?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yep. You tell them to contact staff, which will also be on the postcard. And we will, and staff will be happy to answer their questions. Groundbreaking for the multi-use building at the fairgrounds is October 12th at 10:00 a.m. So I wanted to make sure that you have that on your calendar if you can attend. Then I wanted Chief Tro to present a budget opportunity. And he wrote a memo to me, and I wanted him to present that to the council tonight.
Hello again. Thank you, Eileen. I believe Eileen sent the memo to you, to the council?
Yes, I did.
Did you? Okay. So I'll touch a little bit about it. So we have an opportunity here to add an additional school resource officer at Baker Prairie Middle School. So a little background, we've had a school resource officer at the high school for over 20 years now. It's probably 22, 23 years. And it's been a great partnership. That cost is split 50/50 with the school district and the city. So that's 50% of his salary and benefits for the entire year. And the person, the SRO during the summer helps supplement our patrol staff, which takes a lot of vacations in the summer, so it's really nice to have. So we've talked about adding a second SRO at the middle school for years. But it's really never been real serious until Dr. Downs arrived over the last two years. So we've been talking about which ways, how, how we could add this. School district is actually ready to move forward to add an additional school resource officer this year, if possible. They've, they were able to identify some funding to pay for half of the position for the rest of this fiscal year. I kind of estimated that if, if we can make this happen, and if it gets approved, December 1st through the end of June would be the cost, which roughly is around $100,000 for the seventh month. So they would pay $50,000 and then we would pay about $50,000. I had Eric estimate savings that I have in our police budget right now, today, from positions that aren't filled, that were start, that were supposed to start on July 1st. So for instance, our code enforcement officer was supposed to start on July 1st, but it's about two and a half months of salary savings that we did not spend. We also had Officer Y that was supposed to start July 1st, but we could never get him to start right on July 1st, right? Just because of the process. That was about three month, two and a half months also of savings. And then we're in the middle of hiring another officer, and that's going to be about four to five months of savings. So in our current budget and personnel services, we have over $100,000 in savings. So it will easily pay for the $50,000 if we went to hire somebody to, to add the additional SRO. And again, next year's cost would be requested in the regular budget process. I know there's some concerns, especially after Eric's presentation about future, right? I think this is sustainable, at least in, in the short term. Not only this year can we take care of, but next year we have some, like a one-time cost that will be going away, our Axon body cams that will be paying off. That's $350,000. That will be less in our budget next year. And the other thing that I've discussed with Eileen and we both discussed with the city of Malala, they're, they're interested in maybe contracting our behavioral health specialist out a portion of the time. So we're working on that. And so that could be a source of revenue for us to help offset the cost for the school resource officer. Like I said, this, so this position will be filled by existing staff. We have several officers that are interested in, in the school resource officer position. There's a few cities I know near us, Woodburne has two school resource officers, Sherwood. Sherwood just actually added the same kind of program that we're looking at. So they have one at the high school and the second one is at the middle school. And the plan is also for the, for the one at the middle school is to visit and be a resource and take calls at all the grade schools also in the city. So we've never had that currently. If Baker Prairie or one of the grade schools calls the police for something, we send a patrol officer. We do not send the school resource officer from the high school because we want that person there at the high school. It's our biggest, right? It's our most populated school, and we want them there and not, you know, roaming around at other places. But with the, with the school resource officer at, at the middle school, we would allow them to do that. So benefits, you know, you know, it's connecting with. benefits, you know, uh, you know, it's connecting with students, building positive relationship with students. So not only, I mean, at, at the middle school is, is, is not just, you know, a law enforcement officer. It's a mentor, it's a friend, right? It's a counselor, um, to be there to build relationships. So I think this is, um, something that we need. Um, and I think it's a, it's a good opportunity because we're getting a full-time officer position for really 50% of the cost. Um, and the school has been, like I said, a great partner and, um, to build those relationships even better with the school. I think it's a, it's a good thing to do. And all, any questions?
So you and the interim city administrator concur with this? You recommend it?
I do recommend it.
Yes, I asked Eileen, we've discussed it a few times and, um, she supports it, which is great.
And Dr. Downs?
Fully supports it and he's actually come to, come to be requesting this to see if we could start it this year.
Okay. Well, I think it's an important position, uh, you know, in light of the news of things happening, bomb scares at junior highs, uh, the fentanyl overdoses, massive fentanyl overdoses, various things. I think it's a positive image for the kids. And especially as they move from junior high into high school, you know, and they start seeing the, the faces in a positive face. So I would support it.
Thank you.
You know, I'm, I'm going to second that. I'm going to support that as well. Um, having one child that has already, uh, moved on from Baker Prairie to having another that's about to go into Baker Prairie, I think it would be extremely beneficial, um, knowing just how, how much it is love to have a, a school resource officer there or a child to have that, that peace of mind, that familiar face. I, I believe this would be a great opportunity.
Great, thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Counselor Patton.
Um, so the, the school would be paying 50% this year. Will they be paying 50% in perpetuity or just for this year?
No, uh, they're, they are committed for future years, just like the school resource officer at the high school where they pay 50, 50%. They will continue to pay 50% for the SRO at the middle school.
Okay. Um, I will just, I will say I am a proponent of moving forward with this, but I will, uh, put this caveat on there. Uh, as you know, Chief, I am a huge advocate of our police force. And I think that one of the reasons we are a very safe city is because of them. But when it comes to the budget, the police force takes up seven, 60-some, over 60% of the city's funds. And the, all the rest of the services that the citizens were, demand fall into that remaining 30-some percent, which is not a very big percent. And so I think as we, as a council, start to look at ways that we try to keep the wheels on this bus, we are going to have to come up with some ways to, uh, come up with alternate funding for not only other departments, but the police. Because I know one of your goals has been to put, I believe it's three officers per division, per shift.
Just, yeah, three officers on at all times.
At all times. And we are not there yet.
We are not.
And that's going to take, the, the last thing I want to see is the police officers filling potholes, uh, because we have no public works department, because it's all going to police, okay? So we need to head that off at the pass. And, and I would like to see, I would like to see, uh, you get to that three. Uh, but we are going to have to really have some interesting conversations about how we do that.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Banks?
I'm, I'm in favor of this too. Um, having been in the middle school many, many times, uh, I worry about the jealousy that the high school is going to have because there's more than twice as many kids there. They're going to now want a second SRO, um, for parity. Um, but I, I would recommend if we could hold it off until January, half of December's Christmas break anyway, and then it gets to under $50,000 and then Eileen can just do that decision on her own without council approval.
Yeah, that, that, that's possible. Um, one of the things that, um, I just kind of estimated December 1st was, um, we would not be able to fill that spot until Officer Y, who was just sworn in, is done with training. And we estimated around that time, but you're right, that's a good point. Christmas break is a couple of weeks, so on or around that time would be.
The thing, it'd be nice if, um, when we were doing the budgeting decisions for the following year, if you and Dr. Downs could prepare a, like, a presentation to us on how effective this was at the middle school? Did this make a difference with the, with, with the kids?
Good idea.
In terms of deciding to do this perpetually.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis, Counselor Sterns, anything? No?
Um, I just, I think it's a good idea. I do have a child in Baker, at Baker Prairie now, so I'll probably get feedback on it. So.
Hopefully not.
Right. Yeah, I likewise would support this. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's an important, it's an important thing that we have for protecting our kiddos. So I absolutely support this, um, going forward. Anything else? Counselor Davis, did you have anything? No?
Um, just another, just a quick comment, you know, uh, the fire department, police department have an excellent rapport, uh, relationship. And, uh, Canby Police, uh, support us 100% on, uh, CPR cases and medical calls and things. And so I can also see this police officer being very helpful for us.
Right.
At the, not only the high school, which they have been, but at the, uh, at the junior high as well. Uh, because they do an excellent job on CPR and, and, and giving us information when we arrive.
Good point.
Thanks. Very good. Okay. Anything else? Um, did you want to add, George, or give it back to Eileen here?
Thank you. I'll work with Eileen and Dr. Downs on, uh, on, on making it happen. So.
Yeah, and officially, um, uh, while we are in regular meeting, but we'll probably have to do a supplemental budget to move the money in place. So you will see this decision again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last item I have is, um, miscellaneous updates on, um, public works projects. I'm just going to blow through these, Jerry, but if you have any questions, you can make your way, um, to the front. Um, South Walnut Street is in design phase and waiting for an access permit, um, to 99E from ODOT. Um, and we will, um, uh, this requires an IGA from ODOT that they are working on. So North Pine and Northeast, Northeast 10th Engineering has started, um, in the design phase. Um, Public Works is going to have a leaf drop-off during budget hours by appointment only. This will be scheduled through Rhonda. Uh, Rozelle, if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact her. Um, and this could start as early as next week. Um, the Public Works fueling station is scheduled to go before the planning commission, October 23rd. Um, we still have no update on the ODOT 99E project. Um, sorry, Jerry says. Um, we still are waiting for a response from Clackamas County on the Traffic Safety Commission requests that came in a few weeks ago. Um, we hope to have an update soon and Public Works will start next week on taking down, actually, they started this week on taking down, um, all the hanging baskets in the downtown area. So sad to see those go, but change of season, so.
Right.
So Jerry, is there anything else that you wanted to add to that? Okay. Great.
Counselor President Hensley, I have a question about that.
Okay, Counselor Patton.
Question. Um, at the last meeting, I had mentioned, um, I think it was at the last meeting or it was just in a general conversation. Uh, if 99E is not paved this year, this winter, it is going to blow up. It is going to become a hot mess and people are going to be right agitated. So I had mentioned, we need to put a button on our website, on the front page, no less, that if you have complaints about 99E, you click this and it takes you to a letter that you can then, like a email, a thing that sends something to ODOT to say they have a problem with 99E. Uh, I would like to see us look at the possibilities of that because it is going to be a, oh, it is going to be such a mess.
I agree.
Counselor Patton, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, they are going to rut pave again. I heard through the, um, maintenance staff that they're getting ready to do some, some sort of, uh, patchwork out there to try to hold it together another year. But maybe also have their, uh, risk management, um, email on there too, so that the people know who to go to when they do have damaged cars and stuff like that. I think that's a great idea. Maybe, um, I will send an email to them asking what we do for that. Because that's a great idea to get ahead of it.
Yeah, because I was going to say, I patched the butt crack ripouts in my work pants, but there's only so many years that those patches work. And 99E is the biggest butt crack that this city has. And it's had too many patches put on it.
We have a, we have a hard freeze this year. It'll be, it'll be.
It's going to be a hot mess.
Yep. Hopefully we have a mild winter and it holds together until they can get it paved. But anyways, thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Patton. Now, ever entertaining. Okay, um, actually that does remind me, there was one thing I was going to mention in liaison reports. Although the council, uh, the commission hasn't met, Traffic Safety Commission hasn't met yet until next week. We did have some emails go back and forth and I just wanted, I did post something on Facebook, but I thought I would announce it to the nines of folks here, um, that the ballards, the, the delineators down on, uh, South End Road that are missing, those are set to be, um, they're going to start that project up and put them back in, starting on Friday. They had been waiting for those parts to come in and they finally got their back ordered shipment. So they will be putting those delineators back in, um, and hopefully by the end of the weekend, it'll look like it used to. All right. Do we have any other citizen input? Maya?
We do not.
Okay. Action review, please.
You have approved the consent agenda and approved ordinances, numbers 1612 and 1613 to a second reading on October 18th, 2023.
An hour and eight minutes and we got three things done. Awesome. That's funny. Okay. Any, uh, anything else for the good of the order? I will take the motion to adjourn.
So. Okay.
Got a, but, motion by Counselor Patton and a second by Counselor Madonado. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor?
Counselor Banks that made the motion.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Banks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Counselor Patton? No? Okay. We're adjourned. Good night, Canby.
Have a good night.